Good day everyone, here's your host, Race here. I'm here to proudly present to you our 8th in the summit of our 2020s all-new Back to School Tricks videos. In this summit, I'm going to show you 15 tricks that you can do. Let's get to it right now. So let's go off this and let's fish away in these tricks. I'll see you just up there. As is, I got my 80-page subject notebook here. And in it, happens to be our list. Okay, as is, I'm about to read off our first one from here to you. Which is the trick I like to call, "The Magic Disintegrating Cube Chamber Magic Trick." And so this will look like. Okay, so here I got my Rubik's Cube. My small one, I place this inside here, just like that. And I just give this a close, just like this. You can see, the Rubik's Cube is in there. You can see it's right inside there, watch. By magic, completely disintegrates in the chamber. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. All you're gonna be needing is what you guys see here. Okay, for this, you're gonna need is a small Rubik's Cube, you can see just here. Then you'll be needing is the chamber from the oddball magic trick. What you want to do is gonna take the film that I was showing you before in my other trick videos. You're going to have one up and tape it into the bottom, like this. And I'm going to put the other one on the top part, like this. Why? Because together like this is gonna create the empty look. What's fun to do is it's gonna use your fingers and simply hold this like this. That way, it's just like this. So it's covered by your fingers, gonna place your Rubik's Cube in, just like this. Give it a close, let's simply tuck it in, like this. Sew the cube in the inside, and flip it to the other side quickly, to sew the cube in the inside. All you gotta do is, gonna do twist it like this, when you get to your hand, like this. And by magic, making the Rubik's Cube disintegrate in the chamber, you'll see just here. Makes for the cutest magic trick that you could do. That would definitely make learning fun and make someone smile with this. And that right there is how you do the Magic Disintegrating Cube Chamber Magic Trick. Bring us down to our trick number 2, right to you. That is the Magic Spiderman Card to Bill Magic Trick. Here's what this Spiderman Card to Bill will look like. Okay, first I'm gonna just take one card off the top. See, back there? And front. Actually, by magic, it's just to take this, watch, that's gonna actually turn into a bill. Just like that. And by magic, I take a Spiderman card and change it into a bill. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. All you'll be needing for this is, what you guys see here, on the table. Okay, so all you'll be needing for this is the official Deck to Spiderman. It has all these action figures onto it, as you can see, just here. Right? Okay, all you need for that is just one card out of the pack. Here I chose was this Spiderman. What you wanna do is it's going to tape a bill, and look for the right currency or play money, on the back of one of the cards. And fold like this. Gonna take one card and just simply hide it, just like that. So here's the back and here is the front. Like that. What you wanna do is it's going to assemble the deck together. Just doing this. That, and just place this on top, like this. And have it separated, like this, so it's easy to pick that off, like this. That way you can easily sew the back, making sure that this is covering the bill, which is what you'll see just right here. Okay, so once you saw it, take this, all you gotta do is simply turn it around, take this off the cover. From the covering, like that, and then simply toss it down to your lap. Take your fingers, hold the bill, like this, and simply cast down, like that. Like that. And fast, drop it, and by magic, it changes into a bill. On the Spiderman card, into a 50, 20, 5, whatever you have, with this. Or, here, a play money as well too. There makes an incredible magic trick that you could do, to make learning fun, and to put smiles on everyone's face with this one. Taking this Spiderman card and changing it into a dollar bill. And that right there is how you do the Magic Spiderman Card to Bill Magic Trick. Bring us down to our trick number 3. That is the Magic Ball to Dino Chomper Magic Trick. Here's what this will look like. Okay, so here I've got my Dino here, my little dinosaur, here. And I got this red sponge ball, just here. The two do's, I'm gonna actually just place this into my hand, just like that. Watch this. Are you ready? Make it vanish. Now, I pick this up, just unwrap this, elastic off of it. Watch. By magic, it gives us this sponge ball that I just made vanish. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. Here are the things that you're gonna need to get. One elastic band, color of choice, two red sponge balls from your magic supplies. That Jurassic Chomper, this is actually a pop-up, and it is like a Pez. In a way, it takes out a sucker. You can see, the sucker goes into here and opens up like that. You can see it going out like that. What's wanted to do is gonna place one of these in the inside of it, like this. They're very excusable and packable, all you gotta do is simply put it in, just like that. And by the use of the elastic, you're going to is, just like this. That way it stays down, like that, so it does not open up. So you're gonna keep it like this and place this into your pocket. Here, I just put it into my pocket, you see, just here. Take your sponge ball, and then you're good to go. All you gotta do is gonna, when you go and place this in your hand, you're gonna actually go like this. And keep that fist. This now goes into your pocket as a ditch, like this. Take your hand, and you're gonna move it around, and then simply rub it out of existence. After that is done, welcome in the Dino, also known as dinosaur. And take it out, hold onto it, and take off the elastic band, like this. Go to the lever and open it up like this. And by magic, it gives you the red sponge ball that you just made vanish. You see, just here. A great Jurassic Chomp, and makes a great magic trick as well too. And that right there is how you do the Magic Ball to Dino Chomper Magic Trick. Here you're gonna get a pencil stack, and do the impossible of having one pencil rise from it. Coming into our trick number 4, that is the Rising Pencil Crayon from the Stack Magic Trick. Here's what this will rise like. Here I've got a pencil stack here, since I just take just one of these, just like this. It's getting fancy, you can't get to see that, I just place this into, yeah, like this. Watch. Whoa, let's do it one more time. Are you ready? And by magic, it rises from the stack. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. All you need for this is many different colors of pencil crayons from a pencil crayon pack. Then you'll be needing is a clear elastic, that's nice and thick. Why thick? Because it will help with the pencils. This is put around here like that, and you're going to do is pull apart, just like this. Stack stays in your hand, just like this. Simply just pick up anyone you want, so you just got here. All you gotta do is simply go into here, like this, and then simply just let loose, like that. That's what it's doing, to make it rise from the stack. Make sure that this is facing you though, like this. Put your hand over, and make it rise. Do it again, by simply going over like a wand, placing it back into the stack, just like this. That, and you end up doing that. And by magic, making a pencil crayon rise from the stack of the other pencil crayons. You see, just here, in my fist. And that's how you get pencil crayons to rise, just from a stack of them. And that right there, so you do the Rising Pencil Crayon from the Stack Magic Trick. Coming into our trick number 5, high five, right to ya! That is the Magic Appearing Piece of Slice on the Napkin Magic Trick. And so this piece of slice will appear like. Watch, this is gonna put this over, just like that, watch. By magic, I make a piece of slice appear on the napkin, as you see, just right here. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal that. Secrets! What you're gonna be needing for this is, either a real slice or a fake slice of pizza here. I don't have a fake slice of pizza. Good one, because it involves the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles. One of their favorites, not stat, goes into food as well too. Karabangadid. Anyways, here's how it's done. Okay, what's wanted to do here is, you're gonna hide your fake piece of slice. Be careful with a real piece of pizza. And then, any napkins, of choice, send to be Ninja Turtles, but it really does look pretty nice and upbeat as well too. All you gotta do is again going to hide this one in the napkin, like that. Be very loose to a real cheese pizza. Take the napkin, place it on top of this, and simply bring it down. Napkin goes over, and simply by magic, make this slice of pizza appear on the napkin. After it's done, pick up the napkin, the slice, place it into your hand, and present. Makes a great magic trick that you could do, because it involves the food of the soul. And that right there is how you do the Magic Appearing Piece of Slice on a Napkin Magic Trick. Here you're gonna get your regular Cheerios and change its color. And coming into our trick number 6 is just that, that is the Magic Cheerios Magic Trick. Here's what this Cheerios will look like. Okay, so here we get the breakfast of it all. Here I've got my Cheerios right here, in my bowl, and I got this empty Fruit Loops box, you can see, just here. What you're going to do is gonna just dump these in the inside of it, like this. Okay, make sure it all gets in there, like that, and then just give this a close, just like this. We're gonna go to the bottom and open it. I have my bowl, like this, watch, just take the bottom, watch. By magic, they completely change the color, as you see, just right here, in the bowl. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret to you, right now. Okay, so here is what you've been needing, a big Cheerios pack. Family size, you can see just here. Your Fruit Loops, because as it is, it shares the same O's as a Cheerio. I'll show you in comparison. I have one here, and I got one just right here. I know one's a little bit smaller, but one's a little bit bigger, but they both just share the O shape, as you see, just here. Okay, what you want to do here is you want to make sure that you get these evened out. The Fruit Loops, which is this box here. And you'll need the same amount of Cheerios, as you see, just right here. Okay, I'll just move this, and I'll show you the box. As is, the box is gimmicked for this. I'll show you the gimmick in the inside. Okay, so the gimmick here is cardboard, just here. Making it a half, half bottom and half top. What you wanna do is take some black and white paper and tape it here to create the empty look. This is where you're gonna dump your Cheerios in the top. In the bottom part, you're going to put in your Fruit Loops, right here, the ones that had the color. I'll show you how to preload this. So here, the bottom, make sure you put some tape to open it, just like that. Going to put the tabs down, and just place your Fruit Loops in the inside, just like this, into the bottom, like that. And then just give this a close, like this. And then set this down like that, by seal. Make sure you cut it, so they don't get to see the little tail of the tape. It's gonna look like this. So what you're just gonna do in starting is sewing completely empty, like that, so the black is the empty look. Make sure you have a bowl at hand, as well too. What you want to do is get your Cheerios and just dump it in to the bowl, like that. I'm gonna start off this in the bowl. This was just to sew, how even to get it. Okay, I'm gonna start the bowl, and then simply dump it into the box, like that. Sew it in the box. All you gotta do is just get the tabs and fold them down, like this. Hold, then pull the tab, like this, and pull it down like this. Pull it open, it all, and by magic, the Cheerios change their color by the use of a Fruit Loops box, as you see, just here. And there gets your breakfast in that one. As is, breakfast is the most important meal in a one-day, let alone lunch and supper. There, I just showed you a breakfast item, and of course, a lunch item being the pizza. So there, we discovered two for the daytime. A good trick you could do for the kids of all ages, as well as adults too. And that right there, so you do the Magic Cheerios Magic Trick. From there, that puts us down to 5, 6, 7, trick 7. What's the trick I like to call, the Magical Math Notepad and Cards Magic Trick. Here's what this will look like. Okay, so you got my notebook here. As you see, that's completely empty, and I got these cards. Here I got is, let's see what we have. We got 67, we got a plus, A1, 55 equals. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put these into my magical notebook. So the 67 goes together, we're gonna plus that, just like that. Then we're going to is get A1, 55, 155, right there. Okay, and we're going to put in the equals, just like this. What you're going to do is I'm gonna actually just take my notebook here. And this, I'm gonna actually, this is put these in the inside of the notebook, just like this. Okay, like that. Okay, gonna go like this now, and I'm going to show you. Look, it made this. 67, 67. A55, A is 1, 55. So 67 plus 155 equals, why does it equal? Just give it a close, just like this. And I'm gonna actually just to take my book again, watch, what was gonna happen. First I'm gonna wave over it. And it equals, here, 222. I'm gonna now show you on the calculator for this one, so that way you can see the comparison. So get your calculators and let's type it in together. Okay, so here, I'm gonna do is 6, 7, plus 1, 55, equals 222. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. All you're gonna be needing for this is one, a calculator for adding, and the rest is a notebook. As you see over here, what you're going to do is write down your addition, and then why equals in one side. What you're gonna do is, you're going to have the other one completely empty and clear. Other one has the addition and only the equals. Nothing is right there, except for the one back here. What you wanna do is it's going to make sure that you get a pocket that you're gonna place the cards in the inside. What cards? I'll show you, the cards right here. Here we got is lowercase, little vision, set, 6 and 7, which is 67. The plus on the paper, you're gonna plus the 67, like that. When you put that 6, 7, 7 together, then put your plus down, like this. Then you're going to, by the cards here, A1, and then 55, 155. Put that together, place that, just like that. Then you're gonna place your equals and put that in the bottom, just like that. Then for the notebook, you can make sure that all this is covered by one sheet, so completely empty. Close it, open the pocket, leave made, and put your cards in the inside, like this. Open it up, just like this. Sewing the numbers of the cards, like that. The plus and the equals, you give that a close, again, and you're gonna go back to the other page, back here. Turn around, wave your hand over it, open it up, and sewing what it equals. It all adds up to and equals 222. After that's done, get yourself to your calculator and type it in. Make sure you hit the equals, and it comes up to exact on the calculator, as you see, just here. And there it would definitely make learning fun, not stat, you'll make math fun as well too. There you're gonna surprise your teacher with that one. And for teachers out there, you also take these tricks and help your students with math and have it be exciting with these magic tricks. That would definitely bring the learning right to them and making them feel fun, much joy, and loads of smiles, as well too. And that right there is how you do the Magic Math Notepad and Cards Magic Trick. And from here, we're gonna get down to our trick number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, trick 8. Which is the trick I like to call, the Magic Fascinating Elastic Bundle Trick. Here's what this will look like. Nice pencil bag, you guys can take a look at it. It's nice and colorful, nice and hip. Okay, I'm gonna show you the inside of this. That I got, a whole pile of elastics in the inside. How we can actually make it go into a strand? I wonder, does this reach in? Watch. Whoa! Seriously! Wow, that is like pretty massive, guys. Let's look at it. Wow, look at all that. That is one big strand of elastics ever, from a bundle into a big huge strand. Very nice and colorful. How is this one done? As is, I'm about to reveal the secret. All you're gonna be needing for this are those two things for this. One, as you see right here, it is a long strand of mini, mini elastics weaved and woven together, as you see, just here. Looks like the colors of the rainbow within this one. All you gotta do is simply wrap it around, just like this. All you gotta do is simply wrap it around, just like this. Nice and loose to create the bundle, like this. Very simple to just do this, just like that. Okay, once you got that, you get to go, let's take it off very gently. Make sure you leave this out to grab a hold of it. Then you're gonna need a pencil bag. Pencil bag of your choice, or something very colorful and hip that looks just like this. All you gotta do is do is gonna preload the bundle in just like this. And make sure you give it a zip. Look at it. Wave your hands over it. Unzip it. And sew the bundle of elastics. It really does look like a real bundle of elastics together. All you gotta do is simply go to this and pull straight up like this. And by magic, it like turns into the long strand of elastics together like this. Keep on doing like that, and helping it by going like this. That way, you can see the most longest strand of elastics made from the bundle of elastics in the pencil bag. Together, make a really amazing trick that you can do for practice skills, because it involves elastics and a cool pencil bag. There, you'll get to see lots and lots of colors with that one, and that right there is how you do the magic fascinating elastic bundle trick. Bring us down to our trick number nine, and that is the magical raisin crush can trick prank. Here's what this will look like. So let's get our crushes and let's make like a crush can and make some magic happen with this. Here I got this. Check this out. Just waving my hands over it, snap my fingers. I just get a little, uh, dump my crush, watch. Not stat. We get raisins from it. Not stat, what did the crush can say? Raisin on it. Actually, the French word for grape is raisin, not stat. We got raisins from it right here. Okay, here's how this is just done, as it is about to reveal the secret. All you need for this is a crush can, you see, just here. Then you'll be needing for this, because of the word raisin, you're gonna get yourself some raisins. In there as well too. That is a raisin pack, you can see, for comparison, it says raisins on here, and so does the crush can. All you gotta do is going to put your raisins in a crush can, that's all, that's all that is. Then you'll be needing is a plastic seable cup, you see, just here. Make sure you just give it a dump in like this. Give it a fill. So once you get this all clear and you got all your raisins in the inside, you can just give it a sew, make some magic happen, and simply dump it like this, and you're gonna shake. By magic, you get raisins from the crush can. Not stat, becomes a music shaker, what this one do. As you dump it out into your cup like this. Cheers. There you get the shaking there, the music, and you get the, um, part of the fruit inside there, as well as the drink as well. So what you'll see? Just here. And that right there is how you do the magical raisin crush can trick prank. Bring us down to our trick number ten, and that is the magical, uh, the magic Fanta can Avenger tube magic trick. Here's what this will look like. So here I got my Avenger tube and my Fanta can, as you see, just here. I'm just gonna get this and open, just like this, just to place this in the inside, just like that. That, and this too, is place it in, just like that, you know, hold this like this, going to actually just take this like this, watch. By magic, it vanishes. I place this back on, just like this, and wave my hand over it. Watch. I open it up again. I'm gonna put it onto a table, and by magic, it appears. How is this one done? As it is about to reveal the secret. All you need for this is the official, uh, change tube from Avengers. On the game, exactly. Then you need a Fanta, a Fanta can or a juice can. Well, Fanta is kind of a juice, makes sense. All you gotta do is gonna open up the change part, very easy to open, and place it in like this. Down like this, and then simply drop in. Give it a close with the lid, just like that. Wave your hands over it. And then snapping your fingers. All you gotta do is as you open, you're gonna actually provide pressure like this. Provide pressure and go like this. By magic, it completely vanishes. Tip it back down again, place the lid on top of the tube. Wave your hands over it, snap your fingers. Open the lid again. And then provide pressure, go to your hand, or just onto the table. And pull the tube up like this, and by magic, had the Fanta can to appear after being vanished by the Avenger tube, as you see, just here. And that right there is how you do the magic Fanta can Avenger tube magic trick. There, you get to see the first deuce within that one. Coming into our trick number eleven, and that is the magic school figure slate magic trick. Here's what this will look like. Found it! Peace! So you see this, so here you can see, watch this. Watch. By magic, it changes the face on the magic figure slate. As you see, just here. How is this one done? As it is about to reveal the secret. All you're gonna need for this is just only one thing. And that is a Woodkins wood book. As you see right there, there's the outfit in the inside. And it's a person just here, there's the figure. And give it a nice name, magic figure slate, because it actually looks like a slate, exactly. Then you're gonna need is another face for it, you're gonna place it on here, it has magnets on the back of it, so it's easy to stick in a place, just like that. All you gotta do is sew the plate like this, and just simply moving it off like this. Sew, and by magic, changing the face and putting a smile on the face, as you see, just here. There, definitely put the smiles on with this one. And that right there is how you do the magic school figure slate magic trick. Bring us down to our trick number twelve, and that is the ball two Dalmatian plate magic trick. Here's what this will look like. Delfts like playing balls, you can see here, that one here, this is places into my fist, just like this. Watch, this is going to my plate like this. By magic, you get a Dalmatian on the plate. How is this one done? As it is about to reveal the secret. All you need is a red sponge ball, a Dalmatian that has a console on the, on the bottom, and a plate that has a hundred and one Dalmatians, perfect, because it has a Dalmatian right here. All you gotta do is to hold the Dalmatian like this, ball like this. Place it in just like that. Grab it into the plate. Hold like this, and just throw onto the plate like that. And by magic, hits the Dalmatian plate, and the ball turns into a Dalmatian, as you see, just there. And that right there is how you do the ball two Dalmatian plate magic trick. Bring us right down to our trick number thirteen, and that is the magic year board addition slate trick. Here's what this will look like. Here I'm gonna take you to the school of fish in the inside for this one, I'll see you right there. Okay, so here I got five hundred plus eight hundred plus five hundred plus seven hundred plus twenty, take away a hundred. Take away a hundred, take away two hundred, take away thirty. Take away ten, take away five, plus it by three. Take away twenty, take away six, take away ten, take away twenty, and take away one, and the last one. Equals up to twenty. That's all right. Thinking about the year, what year goes into this? Watch. By magic, it turns into our year, it equals up to twenty twenty. So how it is, it is about to reveal the secret. All you need is a back-to-back chalkboard. Then you'll be needing is some school chalk, and you're gonna write down this addition, by hundred, eight hundred, and so on. Make sure that you write on a sheet like this. First, this here cracks the code of our year of twenty twenty, and it adds up and gets deducted and brings it down to twenty twenty. You're gonna write that, here, gonna turn outside down, that way, as you saw the addition, when it equals up to twenty, as a mystery. All you gotta do is go up and flip the board down like that. So the addition, go up and come down, and by magic, the twenty, puts another twenty into it, making it equal up to twenty twenty. And the addition to that is just right here. There, get the code of our year in Mathwise. Brings us to the year of twenty twenty. And that we there is how you do the magic year board addition slate trick. Then we get right down to our fourteenth one, and that is the magic spider tee magic trick. Here's what this will look like. You see, watch, it's gonna go this way actually. Bring it to the eyes. How is this one done? As it is about to reveal the secret. All you need is a spider t-shirt. Spider, Spider-Man, you're gonna twist it to the other side that has no color in the eyes, and one that has the color. Gonna go is with your arm like this, and rotate it as you go up in the air like this to the skies. The smaller motion, so from here, go up. And just do that. And by magic, putting color in Spider-Man's eyes. You'll see, just here. Then get to our last one, and our fifteenth one, and that is the school top hat Crayola crayon magic trick. See, I'm gonna see my hat here. Can you see, there's nothing in my hat. Watch this, gonna just pull out the hugest crayon from the hat. How is this one done? As it is about to reveal, this is, you need a fake crayon that looks just like this. And then you need is a top hat. You're putting a top hat on a big table, just like this. Make sure it's at the edge of a table, as you see right here. Make sure your table is fairly big and propped up, because you're gonna hide that big crayon that you'll see just here. Place the big crayon in the back like this, that big top hat will cover the tip, that way it's easy to pull up like this behind of it, making the illusion that this is actually coming from the top hat. Like that. So the hat empty, holding this. Then close, reach in. And start pulling out a big crayon from the hat. And there you go, all the tricks that you could do. I'll see y'all back for our ninth installment. Swing and shoot, race and arrow. Over and out, I'll see you soon. And from here, the school dish this went out. I'll see y'all back tomorrow with our ninth installment.